Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates?
Here.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
We've asked Candy Rogers to lead us in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now declare the truth in taxation hearing open at... 6:01. 6:01. Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates?
Here.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
This is an opportunity for public to comment on the certification of the levy. Do we have any comments?
So just as a couple of quick comments, as you know, because our levy, which is our request for taxes, is 5% greater than our extension from last year, we are required to host the truth in taxation hearing, which we're doing right now. All of the proper notifications have been done, including putting the truth in taxation hearing notice on the banner of our webpage, as well as in the newspaper. Please remember that we are over the 5%, not because of the rate that we are levying, but because of the increase in equalized assessed value, which is right now estimated at 9.5%. We do not estimate those values. That comes from the county assessor's office. We simply apply our rate to the value of the property. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? There being no further questions or comments, can I have a motion and a second to declare the hearing closed at... 6:03. 6:03 PM.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
I now declare the working cash bond hearing open at... 6:03. 6:03. Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer? Here?
Here.
Mrs.?
Oh, yeah.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
This is an opportunity for public to comment on the working cash bond.
So just as a, just a reminder as where we are in the process, a couple of months ago, we had Stiefel and Spear here outlining for you what this would look like, approximately a $4.5 million bond issuance. In November, you approved a resolution of intent to issue those bonds. This month is the required hearing, which we are holding right now. Next month, you will actually be asked to take action to actually issue those bonds. And of course, then those financial institutions do their part in that process. You did ask, Mr. Fritz asked last month, and Mr. Wadsworth, when we did the refunding bonds, you asked the same question a couple of years ago. The approximate fees for doing this type of thing are about $256, or, I'm sorry, about $56,000. That's not the official number, it's an estimated number, as there can be some additional attorney fees. These types of fees all roll into the bond issuance process. Remember, as part of this process, our goal here is to use these funds for one-to-one, major construction, curriculum initiatives as well, and improvements in social, emotional initiatives across the district. Also being that they are working cash bonds, working cash can only be spent by the board. So whenever there is a request or need to spend working cash bonds, that starts here with a notification to you, discussion, problem solving, then the following month, we would go into some type of transfer, working cash resolution for the actual purpose of the process. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions or comments from the board? There being no further questions or comments, can I have a motion and a second to declare the hearing closed at... 6:05. 6:05.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
The regular meeting will now begin at... 6:06. Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner?
Here.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the approval of regular minutes and special meeting minutes, approval of DPS and LCSEA treasuries reports and monthly bills, the balance sheet and monthly expense report, the discipline report, staff development report, monthly website, social media activity, and building reports that were contained in your packet.
Second.
There is nothing unusual in this month's consent agenda, so my recommendation is that the board approve it. Any comments or questions? Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
Special presentations?
Yeah, we're gonna do like we did last month, and we will go through Reagan's and then have a stop, and acknowledge anyone who's here, and then pick up with the high school and stop after that again, so. Take a look at Mr. Magnifician up there.
Good evening. I'm at Magnifician Principal of Reagan Middle School. It's my honor to recognize Xavier Iverson and Kenley Rogers as Reagan Middle School's December Student of the Month. Fourth of these students are phenomenal student athletes. They're well-accomplished in all the sports that they've participated in throughout the year, and are looked to as leaders on their team. They're also looked at as leaders in the classroom. They go above and beyond in everything they do. Their hard work, their character, their positive attitudes have made a lasting impact not only on their peers, but staff who have had them in their classrooms. We are proud of your accomplishments, wish you continued success along the way. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
I'm Xavier Iverson, I'm December Student of the Month. I'm in eighth grade. My favorite activities outside of school is playing sports and hanging out with my friends. My favorite teachers at RMS are Mr. Randick, Ms. Baker, and Mr. Ferguson, and Mr. Sanrock, and Mr. Doherty, and Mr. Randick. If I could change a rule at RMS, it'd be more people in the bathrooms than four, because more people have to use the bathroom than four people, and like, we gotta worry about getting to class on time too. So just letting everyone in the bathroom at once, it might be a little bit crowded, but I feel like it, like, we'd get to class faster, and it'd help kids not be late to class, because then it wouldn't be an excuse if all the kids could go to the bathroom at once. My proudest moment is definitely winning Student of the Month, because it just shows me how much my teachers like me to vote for me, and I really appreciate them and all they do for me. If I had an opportunity to create a new club at RMS, it would be definitely like a sports club or something, like, like, for people to talk about sports, even if you don't play them, like, it'd be fun for kids to like, just chat and talk to their friends about sports, and like, what's going on around the world in sports and stuff. Advice I would give to an upcoming sixth grader is, like, don't be scared to come into middle school, it's really not that bad. And like, you should just be really, like, happy that you're moving on to another stage in school and stuff. And you're gonna have lots of fun in middle school, because you got a lot of good teachers, and you got a lot of good, um, a lot of good people, and that would love to help you and just be, not be a better student, but even be a better person in life. And that's all. So, thank you for everyone that voted for me to be December Student of the Month, and I really appreciate you guys.
My name is Kenley Rogers, and I'm in eighth grade. I do activities inside and outside of school. In school, I try my hardest on being the best student that I can. Outside of school, I enjoy doing softball, volleyball, and hanging out with my friends and family. One of my favorite teachers at RMS is Mrs. Kent. I think she does a good job on explaining the lessons and helping me with the hard ones. I also think she made the math class fun. One school rule that I would change is bringing backpacks to class. I think this would prevent interruptions by sending students out to their lockers when they forget things. One of my proudest moments of myself is when I had a perfect game last summer on Amber Ridge softball team. I had 14 strikeouts. A club I would join at RMS is a weightlifting club. I think this would be a good idea for after-school and for the athletes that are off-season, and it will benefit them for the next. Advice I would give to a sixth grader: Study for your tests, have a positive mindset, and just be yourself. Thank you.
Parents, we know you want to take pictures, so you can come on up too and go right over here so you can get good pictures. My turn. Good job.
We had a little fun with, with these two. They've got a really good sense of humors and like to kind of prank, you know, others. So I told them they had to prepare a song that they had to sing for you guys. I told them it wouldn't be too tough. They would only ask me little questions.
Did you get really nervous when we said, "No, you can't go sit down"? You really thought you were...
Well, yeah, at first I thought I was just gonna like, take a picture and like, go back to my seat.
Congratulations to both of you. It sounds like you're doing a lot in and out of school, and I bet the high schools really looking forward to seeing you both.
Yeah.
Both had a great video.
Thank you.
Real good. Wonderful smiles, both of you. And I like when you said, you listed like, all of your teachers. Those are your favorites.
Mostly coaches, weren't they?
Maybe.
Is that right?
Uh, there's a couple of B.E. teachers I like. But a lot of them, like, they help me through classes and stuff, so I appreciate all of them, like I said, if they have.
Yeah, it was definitely hard to pick a favorite teacher, because there's so many of them. Um, but yeah, Mrs. Kent, she really helped me do a lot.
Yeah, I just ignored the fact they said, "I'd pick a teacher." Like, I thought, I just put like, teachers.
What are you each most excited for in high school?
Uh, definitely playing, uh, high school football.
I'd say like, getting more opportunities and, I don't know, like, just like, playing softball with my mom coaching, and I feel like it'd be like, fun to do, so yeah.
Well, thank you both for coming. We're really proud of students like you.
Thank you.
Next is our DHS Student of the Month.
Good evening, this is Jared Chaner, principal at Dixon High School. It is my honor to introduce to you our 2024 December Student of the Month, Hayden Fulton. Hayden is a polite, hard-working, respectful, humble young man. He's near the top of his class academically. He's involved in a variety of things outside of the classroom and does a great job in everything that he does. Hayden's attitude, his effort every day, are exactly what we want our students to be like here at DHS. Congratulations, Hayden.
Hi, my name's Hayden Fulton. I'm a senior this year. I'm involved in cross-country, track, band, TRAM, and scholastic bowl. My favorite teacher is Mr. Padilla, because he makes the class discussions really interesting. I would give future freshmen the advice to get involved, because it makes high school way more memorable, and you meet tons of new people. The class that I think I would create would be some sort of life skills class, so I could learn like, cooking, or how to fix a car or something. For the next year, I'm planning on attending Iowa State as an animal science major and being in the marching band. In the next five years, I hope to be in some veterinary school.
What questions you guys have for Hayden? We, we were joking when he came in, I, I may have said it in my video, I'm not sure. He has a lot of really positive qualities and characteristics. Hayden's probably not the one who stands up in front of people and gives speeches a whole lot. He's a pretty quiet kid, but he's, he's an awesome kid, a really good example of what we want at Dixon High School. Extremely hardworking in everything that he does. Our last Fulton to come through. We've had him for...
Nine years.
Nine years, yeah.
So that's why you like animals? Because you can talk to them, huh?
I guess so.
Or, or not, or not.
Do you have a lot of pets at your house and animals?
Yeah, we have two cats and a dog. And I'm always stuck with kind of corralling them when my mom needs help.
Your dog probably weighs as much as you? Used to. Pretty close.
Passed up a little bit recently. For a while, he weighed more than me.
And my nephew, John Fritz, went to Iowa State Vet School. It's a great school. Good luck to you.
I'm really excited to go there next year.
Should be.
Congratulations, Hayden.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then finally, under special presentations, Mrs. Max Phillips is gonna come up and announce the DEA Teachers of the Month.
It was holiday here, so I still have Santa and Noel. Um, so we had 32 people nominated for the month of December. From Washington, we have Micah Hay, Teresa Sholders and her intern Stephanie, Jill Alston, Laura Gulke. From Jefferson, we have Leah Saunders, Tisha Keen, Keely Dewey, Kelsey Stone, Carly Schultz, Twice, Jordan Saunders, Paige Sutton, Brittany Pitzer, Kim Conderman, Dan Went, and the whole third grade team. From Madison, we had Sarah Hansen. From Reagan, we had Amy Abel, Rita Gillespie, John Page, Twice, Kelly Rule, Ally Gole, Amanda Sawyer, Ashley Omquist, Abby Pace, Gary Weidman. And then from the high school, we had Natalie Gordon, three times, Simon Thorpe, Ryan Hoffman, the whole special ed department from the high school, Ryan Deeds, Charlie Bishop, Kelly Genius, Emily Pittman, and Jenny Kirchner. And our winner of the good card was Ken Conderman.
I have received no correspondence from you, Margot, and we didn't check the list. Nothing, thank you. All right, we'll move on to action items. And I was gonna say, this is a good time to leave. I was so mad. I made a motion from the board that the board approve the IASV professional search agreement for the executive search process as presented.
Second.
As you remember, we had the Illinois Association of School Boards in to present to you how they do the superintendent search. And in speaking with each of you individually, it was unanimous to utilize the Illinois Association of School Boards for your superintendent search. So they will begin in earnest this next June with a hope of about one year from now, announcing my replacement. So I did have one board member say, "What if we decide to add on something, if we want some sort of, um, different sort of community engagement that is in here, then we would just bring that addendum back and just approve that?" This right now is to engage them in the overall process. If there's anything else, you can let me know, and we'll make sure then that we get a contract for that and bring it back for approval. Are there any other questions? Roll call. Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the resolution abating taxes for year 2024, Series 201-88A, as presented.
Second.
So in April of 2018, the board at that time had $10,650,000 worth of alternate revenue bonds issued. These bonds were designed to be paid back by county solicitor sales tax. So each year, what we do is we do an abatement of the taxes, because we will pay the bill ourselves. If we don't approve the resolution, then the county clerk, because they are government-issued bonds, the county clerk would then bill, or, I'm sorry, they would tax the people for these. And that's not the intent of what these bonds were. The 218A series is from now through 2038. So we'll actually have this resolution about 13 more times. For any of you who are still on the board at that time, you'll be remembering me. Be happy to answer any questions.
Roll call. Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the resolution abating taxes for year 2024, Series 201-9A, as presented.
So the, the 2019A bonds were issued in April of 2019 for $4,215,000. And these only go a couple of years shorter, so these you'll only be making the resolution through 2036. Be happy to answer any questions.
Roll call. Mrs. LaLawn Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the tax levy as presented.
Come up.
Second.
So as I mentioned in the truth in taxation hearing, the, the tax levy that I presented to you is the same levy that I presented to you last month, that you did a resolution to intend to file. We'll be issuing the same resolution, should you so choose to approve the levy tonight. There is a little bit of an add-on that I wanted to add, and this is in this part of your packet as well. It has to do with the operation fund reserve reduction disclosure, as well as the Miller ratio. I know Mr. Wadsworth attended a couple of, or a session on this particular process. As part of this, we are required to, in writing, present to the board the disclosures that I provided to you. The first one, which is similar to what I've done every single year, is cash balances. Looks like this in your packet. It simply discloses the cash balances as of October 31st, which was a, at that time, was a un-audited number. But it also has the June 30th, 2024 balances, both the cash and the investment amounts. So you can see those numbers. The other part of that doctor, the other part of that is these two documents. This is kind of the official document that ISB and some of the other professional organizations are having us present to all of you. Basically, the operational fund disclosure is based on a ratio. We are not allowed to have more than two years' worth of cash at the end of the year. And how do you calculate that amount of money? And the idea would be is if you have more than two years of cash, why are you levying for more? That's kind of the idea. So there's a law now that says, our current number, as you can see, the cash reserve balance to expenditure ratio is .38. So as you can see, we are not anywhere near the 2, that, or the 2, I'm sorry, 2.5 on number. And that is based on average operating expenses for each of the last three years in the main three operational funds, the Ed Fund, O&amp;M, and the Transportation Fund. And all those numbers are kind of disclosed to you within that packet. This one is for the Miller ratio, which is the judicial application of that law, and it's, it's a little bit different. It is a 2.0 ratio, and it asks that you include the taxes receivable as part of your cash balance. I'm not quite sure how including taxes receivable that you haven't quite gotten yet are part of that, but this is where we are. You'll see on that sheet that all of our numbers, with the couple of them, are still under 2. We're not close to really being over 2 on, on really any of these. The Health Life Safety Fund reaches higher numbers because we can only spend it for health-life-safety projects, and we've been setting it aside for the last couple of years because we're getting ready to start our 10-year health-life-safety survey, which will deplete a significant portion of those funds. As part of this, one of the stories that has kind of come out of this process is, is there was a, a, a school district in the suburbs that was holding on to about $10 million in their O&amp;M fund to do an addition at a building. And basically, then, there was a lawsuit that ensued and kind of in, in this process. We, we don't have $10 million in our O&amp;M fund. We're not anywhere close. As a matter of fact, the budget that we approved at the beginning of the year is actually a deficit budget in O&amp;M. But it does show you that there can be a huge amount of money that, that could be set aside by certain school districts. And that's where some of these types of rules come from. This will be part of our yearly disclosure with the levy in writing to you, so that you are made aware of all of our fund balances as you determine whether or not the levy is appropriate within a given year. In the upcoming years, I'll do this in November, when you're first presented with the levy, we were still going through a lot of the professional development for this at that time. Back to the original statement, the levy is the same levy you were presenting with last month. It is an increase that required us to do a truth in taxation hearing, which you did. Upon approval, this will be submitted to both county clerks, Oakland and the county. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mark, on the Miller ratio, you said, the, the 2.0 numbers there, I see that, you said HLS, Health Life Safety is, and both that and IMRF are above that. I assume the Miller ratio, though, is only on the entire entirety of the aggregate of all the funds? Or is it part of it?
Really, the, it's, it's really only applies to the operational funds. I put those in there as a, a transparent disclosure.
Okay.
But I do think that, seeing that for like, IMRF, we need to consider that, as we look at IMRF into the future. We, we should not be taxing at a rate greater than, than what we need within IMRF. As you've heard our auditors say, we are paying our amount. We've always paid our amount for IMRF or TRF, TRFs. But there's no reason for us to have significantly high fund balances,[1729.31] But there's no reason for us to have significantly high fund balances, which are ultimately taxpayer dollars as part of the levy. There's no reason for those to grow too high, basically.
Are there any other questions? Roll call. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the school maintenance project grant as presented.
Second.
So on a yearly basis, the state has provided small maintenance project grants to the school districts. They are on a matching basis, and they are maxed at $50,000. So in other words, we spend $50,000, they'll give us the other $50,000 for us to do the projects. Throughout the last number of years, we've been doing a lot of asbestos abatement and floor replacements as part of the process. What we are asking for here tonight, the asbestos removal and floor replacement at Jefferson, is the last of that flooring across the district. It is, it is good practice for us to take advantage of the entire $50,000. It's free. They're going to give it to us, and then we use it. So we've highlighted a few things here that we are submitting the grant for, Washington seal coating and stripping, striping the playground. Jefferson, the same, the parking lot and bus lane. Dixon High School, seal coating and striping the teacher's parking lot. District Office replacing carpeting, which is, we estimate, 35 years old. And seal coating and striping the parking lot as well, along with the flooring at Jefferson. As part of the approval, what you are doing here today is you are establishing a set aside of your portion of the $50,000. We will also, in addition to that, the numbers come out at $1,280.83 of additional expenditure on our part.
So this is just the grant application in the event, I assume it's not certain that this will be approved, or?
Well, it's pretty certain. I mean, they're non-competitive grants offered to every district.
Okay.
And the state sets this money aside?
There's a state set aside, and not everybody does.
So you can trust the state on that? You're welcome.
In this instance, they haven't let us down yet.
Okay, great. And when do you expect to start the work on these?
So the work, they actually, will actually give us the money come maybe March, and these are summer projects. You know, seal coating, parking lots, and stuff we had to wait for people to be gone, doing floor removals and stuff. So these things happen over the summer.
Cool.
Other questions? Roll call. Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
We need a motion that the board approve the second reading of board policies as presented.
Second.
As a reminder, the board policy committee met at the end of October to review these and to answer any questions that either of our bargaining units or board member had. Mr. Fritz is the representative for the board. First readings were last month. Second reading and final approval is this month. As a reminder, the bulk of the changes are related to Title IX and the name changes and requirements to Title IX that became effective August of this year. And so there have been no other reach outs from either bargaining units or anything else coming to light, so my recommendation is for the board to approve these so we can get them as a part of our board policy manual.
Any questions? Roll call. Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the request for early graduation for the following Dixon High School students listed in your packet, per board policy six, colon, 300.
Second.
In front of you are those students that are up for recommendation for mid-year graduates. It's quite a larger class than we've had in a while, which we're very proud of. And the reason, obviously, finals are this week, and successful completion of your finals is a requirement, and if they meet all of those requirements, then a diploma will be provided for them in December. And as always, they are welcome to go through walking graduation that will occur in late May, early June.
Questions? Roll call. Mrs. Gates?
Aye, and congratulations to all these people that make it.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the proposed calendar for the 25-26 school year as presented in your packet.
Second.
We always like to get our calendar out, if we can, six months ahead of time, so our families know when school will be starting. And for next year, we have been working with both leadership in the unions to review this. And what we have here is our proposed 25-26 calendar. If there would be any changes between now and, let's say, June, since we don't meet in July, we can always bring that back to the table if there are anything that needs to change on our behalf or anything that would come down from the state.
Questions, comments? Roll call. Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye. We need a motion that the board approve the revised job description for Office Assistant Attendance Secretary at DHS as presented.
Second.
Anytime that anyone resigns or retires, and this happens to be for Mrs. Deena Frye, who will be leaving us at DHS in the spring, we have a chance to take a look at the job description, make sure that it's up to date, and we want to get this posted and hopefully have somebody hired very soon. So if there's some training that we can do between the current office assistant and the one hired, we can get that done. So we'd like to have this done before we post it because we use the job description as part of the posting.
Roll call. Mrs. LeBlanc Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
Information items. Mark, updates on your business report?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick things. In the, kind of the briefs there, our per capita tuition is $12,355. This comes directly off the audit report. So what this means is if an out-of-district student wanted to attend our schools, that's what they pay. The process for tuition-based children at Dempsey is different. It has a prescribed formula that we follow, and it doesn't follow this same rules. Also, you may or may not be aware that over the last couple of years, we've received a variety of supply chain grants for food service. I bring these to your attention tonight. It was, you know, about $180,000 over the last couple of years. Two reasons. One, we have fulfilled our obligation of how you designate and show the spending. And for someone like us with a third-party vendor, you do that through a per breakfast and a per lunch charge. If we were actually buying our own food and doing that food service, we actually would have been buying food, buying food from a processing company of some type. The reason I bring this to your attention, though, is this was free money in a lot of ways, and we have not seen any of this now in 2025. So this type of grant really came out of COVID, and we don't anticipate saving, just as an eff率ity. I provided for you a summary of CPPRT funds as I do each time we receive it. As you can see, it is declining. We'll just kind of leave it at that, but we'll see what happens over the next two months. And then finally, I just wanted to show you, I provided for you the bond repayment table that I bring out each time we have to make bonds, bond payments next month as part of the accounts payable reports. You will be asked to approve $3.1 million in bond payments. Always makes me a little bit nervous when I actually submit those for payment. You may be wondering, okay, do we have those funds? If you look at the treasurer's report, it's under the debt service line, we have $3.6 million, and that's what those funds are for. So we're doing perfectly fine with the payment of our debts.
Any questions?
Got a handout that just basically shares a little bit about our professional development that has occurred first semester, and this has actually been updated again.
Oh, wow. All right.
So, and this by no means is exhaustive to everything that's happening throughout the district. What you see here is primarily a result of three items. One, curriculum and assessment, the professional development that we need with our curriculum resources or anything with assessments like our Renaissance and products that we have. Also, admin meeting discussions. And then the third thing where these professional development ideas or activities come from is committee discussions. Even tonight, we had a special ed committee meeting, and we agreed that we would need some professional development for some of our, for our paraprofessionals next semester. And Karina said she would be able to do that. So January 6th, if you look on the flip side there, we've got several things occurring on the first day of school vac. We've got data analysis for the STAR fall and winter benchmarks. That's where our administrators and our teachers just basically break down what happened with students as far as their growth during first semester. Then we have reading instruction strategies. That's going to be provided by Amy Scott there at the high school, but also the one that we agreed on tonight, the para-training dealing with difficult students that Karina is going to provide our paras right at the beginning of second semester. So like I said, these professional developments, they come primarily from three different sources, whether it be admin discussions, committee discussions, or what we need for curriculum and assessment. You can go down through there and you'll see that there's quite a bit occurring second semester. We also had someone from the ROE speak to us tonight, who's going to be providing co-teaching training throughout the semester, at least one evening, one evening a month. And you can see lots of CPI refreshers going down through there as well. So quite a bit, when you look at the hours that are being offered there. But as I mentioned right away, this is not an exhaustive list because we have people going to conferences all the time, and that's things that they choose to select, they select to go to, and they, you probably see those in your, in your reports where they will ask to go to coaching clinics and different things like that, and they go to a lot. So there is, there's quite a bit of PD that goes on in the district throughout the year, and this signifies a portion of it for first and second semester. So, any questions? Okay, thanks.
Anything else from administrators?
Can I just say, okay, we had our homework last night, last Friday, and it was attended really, really well. We've done this for the second year now. We had over 280 people attend, which was an awesome full house. We had any two families that were represented without numbers. So we had a great time. We would love to bring on the community and just have something fun to do with their families that were free. It was free to come in, it was free to just be a part. We had Chinese, we had grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, neighbors came with kids whose parents couldn't come. We gave out a goodie bag for the family, but it was just so well-attended. They all had such a great time. Our parent involvement team is the one that put them on for our building. So we will continue to do this and offer more things in the spring. We had a great turnout for our picnic carnival in October. This was in December, so we'll do something at the end of the year, for the end of the year celebrations. So just wanted to share that it was a wonderful time. Hope we can make it next time. And again, we'll get that up to you earlier, and we did this last, I think we shared it last month, we're coming up and going, but we got a lot of stuff going on. So just letting you know, it was a great, well-received evening, so.
And this week, there are just a plethora of activities in every building. The elementary, if you've looked at our social media, K5 every day is a different dress-up day, a different knowledge day. I know that our administrators have been treating even our teachers to donuts, cocoa bars, and different things. I know that even Mr. Shaner had, how many cookies did you get?
Cookie baking at my house. The admin and secretaries came over on Monday, and that was our treat for our staff on Tuesday. We had a good time, I hope we keep doing it. About, about 400 cookies?
Wow.
Yeah, it was a lot.
Who did clean up? Yeah.
God bless my wife. She did a lot of dishes that night.
Wow. Middle school, I know Mr. Baker sent me the other day, you've had a special visitor in the evening walking through the building. Once kids are out, you want to?
Yeah, Santa Claus made an appearance last night. We've had some mischievous elves appearing throughout our building, too, that have just done some weird things, and it's been fun. We do the 12 Days of Christmas, you know, we get some staff involvement, student involvement, some dress-up days. It's been a lot of fun, kind of, you know, keeps everybody light and cheery the last few weeks before break. But if you were at our band concert last night, Santa Claus made an appearance at the very end and had a little speaking role in a piece that was played, and it was sixth through 12th grade band, did like a little medley together. We might need a bigger stage if our band continues to grow, but they were just amazing. So, yeah, Santa was the final act of the night and brought a little cheer to everybody that was there.
Man, I thought the band concert was really good last night. I was very impressed with the music department.
Yeah, I agree. And you know what's awesome? It's a great problem to have that we just continue to grow. But, you know, I remember years where we, you know, at least at the middle school level, just had one band up there playing. And now that we've been able to expand and get more kids involved and embedded in our daily classes, we had a sixth-grade band play, a seventh-grade band play, an eighth-grade band play. And that'll just continue to grow once they get up to high school. And then just seeing them all play together, it was, it was neat. I think what was really awesome, too, is just the behind-the-scenes before the concert starts, seeing all of these kids just interacting and excited, you know, to be with their peers and their older peers that they look up to. Time just goes so fast, so it's like the high school kids remember when they were little sixth graders doing the same things. Awesome, awesome program.
Yeah, so it's just, there are lots of amazing things going on in our buildings, and the energy is just great. And I know that our teachers are tired and ready for a break, and I think our kids are too, and our administrators, but boy, you wouldn't know it this week with the energy and the enthusiasm. So wanted to give a shout out to all of them for just doing some incredible things. And then even this past Saturday, our PTO had a Winter Palooza hosted at Jefferson, and I know Mrs. Schaefer and myself, I saw Mr. Segal and read to students, and it was incredibly well-attended. And I thank our PTO for, again, getting our families involved in our schools and, you know, doing some fun things together as a family and some things that the kids enjoy as well. So I thank them. Next up on the agenda is the Fall All Conference Athletes for Fall 2024, as well as the Big Northern Conference Conference Athletes. Mr. Shaner and I were talking about this. This is a very proud thing for us because we always talk about student athletes, and here, the student is first, and you look at the number of kids who have 3.5 or higher GPA on top of all the practices and all the games and all the other things that students are involved in. So we give congratulations to those students who have made this list for fall, and we're very proud of all that they do to keep their studies up while all of their extra and co-curricular activities. Other committee reports from the board?
Mark, I'm sorry. I do, I apologize. Rogers not here, but it came out recently, and I apologize if you didn't see it. Just do want to keep everybody up to date. If you didn't see, the Big Northern Conference invited Duran Pecatonica to join in a couple of sports, not this coming school year, but the following. That got approved by the DuPec co-op or both of their boards at their most recent board meetings. So they're going to join in football and boys and girls soccer starting in the So they're going to join in football and boys and girls soccer starting in the fall of 26. So I know there was an article in the paper, I think maybe yesterday it came out after it was official for everybody's board. So I want to just give everybody a heads up on that.
Also to not put you on the spot, but you had a recent announcement of those who are going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you didn't get a chance to see that, please look on our website. Another great class. You did put me on the spot. January 25th? Is that the date? Thank you. January 25th, we have a home game that night. So we always do that in coordination. We'll do kind of a ceremony at the post house early afternoon and then invite everybody to the game to be recognized that night too.
I'll put that in an upcoming newsletter so you can get it on your calendars if you'd like to either make the Hall of Fame. It is, it is such an amazing time to see our alumni or community members come back and the amazing tributes they give to Dixon High School, to the teachers, to the coaches, to the community. It is a goosebump kind of day if you can make it. And you've never seen people come back just so grateful for their school. And I think that says a lot about our district. And then in the evening when they're recognized at halftime, is it halftime or in between the two games?
I think we've been doing it in between the two games.
In between the two games. And they come out and the crowd is, is able to recognize them. It's just a truly special weekend if you can make any part of that. I will put those dates in for you and the times of the game. So if you can make either, both. Now back to school board and committee reports.
Well, I'll go first with the PRC or DEA Professional in Relation Committee. Many of the schools, the representatives, mentioned some of the family experiences that have already been shared tonight. I think, you know, it's always, it's always nice to have these family events which offer parents or guardians and kids a good reason to come to school. And that's kind of what, I think everybody gets excited about that. So there have been several of those, but they've already been mentioned tonight. Conscious discipline, that seemed to have been a, a good professional development. And it took place at Washington, but it's also going to be at the other schools. Is that right?
Jefferson and Madison are doing CPI reframing behavior.
That's right.
Which is kind of a building off of that. But Dempsey has expressed an interest in as well due to some of their age levels or upcoming age levels of, of learning more about conscious discipline.
Washington is going to be the next training, which is January 6th for conscious discipline. But they're going to be, that's going to be taking place in, at the high school. Just moving folks over there and making a little bit more.
Oh, do the space.
Yeah. So that might be why you're thinking that.
There was talk about paras again and needing paras. So we're always looking for, I talked to somebody today about being a para. We're always looking and always have room for them. There was discussion about facilitators at both Jefferson and Madison about facilitators being equally spread through the disciplines. And there have just been some changes as far as scheduling, right, that, that caused some of that. You don't know until you're doing it that, so that, that's a problem that's easily resolved. Jefferson talked about their attendance board. I was glad to hear that, like a bulletin board for perfect attendance and the kids. It's a sort of interactive bulletin board where classes are recognized on the bulletin board when they have perfect attendance in their classroom. And it's one of those ways that we're trying to encourage attendance at all schools really. There was some discussion about the e-learning day. And Margot said she's clarifying that with, somebody asked about that and you're going to clarify it on the website again. Finals are happening at the high school. Finals have been shortened, is that right Jared? Is that what you said?
It used to be 80 minutes, now it's 60.
Right. There was some wasted time, which is understandable. The calendar was discussed again. Cooking bake, baking cookies was talked about at, at that meeting as well. And we are not meeting in January. As somebody pointed out, there would have been four days this week and they come back on January, in January and we have a meeting. So there was not going to be much to talk about in January. So that meeting has been canceled, but we'll pick it up again in February. That's it.
I'll do DESPA, Professional Relations Committee and Special Ed. There's a lot of overlap in both of these meetings, even though there's different committees. And as much as we do some of the hard work for the district as far as making decisions and hearing some of that stuff, it was really nice the last couple of months to hear all the wonderful things that are also happening in our schools between the, the trainings that are in response to our staff really struggling with some of the behavioral things and some of the really just uplifting things that we're doing for our kids and for our staff. I, one of the, I know this is a little farther back, but Veterans Day, I know you're really concerned that we're going to be in school during Veterans Day when we took that bump for the calendar. But listening to the staff talk about all the presentations and the veterans that came in and talked to the kids and the, the presentations and the picture, I think shadow boxes that they did for them and how appreciative the veterans were of that day and all the activities that were going on in our different schools, it was just really nice to hear about that. And I think they really appreciate it and the kids really got to learn a lot about it and from, directly from the veterans. So that was really, that was nice to hear. There's still a lot of issues going on over at Washington, but I do think they're getting better and they're being addressed. And the district brought in our psychiatrist or psychologist who's usually telehealth for some of our APs and evaluations and a board certified behavioral analysis who came in and did some observations and gave us a lot of feedback. So that was really a huge bonus to our, our staff and all of our kids that are needing the extra help. The paras and special ed folks are asking on behalf of paras to get more training. So I know Karina's doing the training during their SIP days in January 6th on behavioral issues and how to deal with difficult children. Mindy Donahoe, who's part, who's one of the heads of DESPA, had been talking about a training that she went to, which I can't remember, I can't put my hand out, was it 321 something? 321 Insight. And there's four modules to that for paras, which Margot's looking into and how we can use that. All of the, and correct me if I get this wrong, all of the current DESPA members, actually, if you're listening, you actually have free access to that through your, the email or?
Yeah, by being a part of the IEA and NEA, they, they give that to them as a part of the benefits package and they just email them and get them a module setup.
So I would strongly suggest they take advantage of that because it sounded like there's a lot of really good information that Mindy presented from her going to that training. Let's see, what else? And there's a job fair, which I think you guys can, Doug or you or Margaret can talk about that. Dixon is going to have a job fair in January. Anybody who wants to come out and apply to be a sub or a para, you are more than welcome to come out to the district office and everything you need will be here from what it sounds like. I don't know if you want to talk more about that.
I want to give Erin, our new HR person here, my assistant, kudos because she's the one who really, you know, has seen this done and said, let's get this going. So we're going to offer it twice, once in the late morning and once after school. So in case someone is working and if you are interested in being a substitute, a sub- para, a sub-teacher, or want to find out, you know, how you apply and, and what you need in order to do that, we're going to be having two different sessions out here. And they can come out and between Erin and myself and Doug and information from ROE47, we're going to have everything here. So we're looking at, a lot of times people say, I wonder what it would be like to be a para, or I'm interested in perhaps substitute teaching. And we're going to talk about not only what are the expectations of the position, but what are the expectations of Dixon Public Schools? So people know coming in, if you're going in, what does it mean to be a sub? Whether it's a teacher or a para pro or any other position, quite frankly, that we have in the district. So we're hoping that will help increase our pool. It was nice to hear, I think, you know, a number of the paras say, we finally have had some more subs and that's great to meet the needs of our kids. So we're hoping even to make that pool a little bit deeper for everybody.
And I would just put a little plug out there for people who are retired, or maybe you're blessed enough to have a position where you're not working every day and you have one of those higher degrees. You do qualify to get a sub certificate and come in and sub at a school and share some of your expertise and some of your knowledge. And if you have an interest in helping the school district and our students, just call out here and ask if you, if you would qualify to help, if that's something that's on your heart to do. We also had Kelly Markham. Did you talk about that?
Just briefly.
Yeah. Kelly Markham from the ROE come in to talk about how do we really start kind of conceptually relooking at co-teaching in our classrooms, which we do at the high school and some other little places, maybe Reagan. But really, how do we start to relook at what that looks like for our students and what the benefits could be for them and having a special ed and a gen ed teacher teaching at the same time in an equalized manner? So that was kind of an interesting concept or perspective. And there's going to be four dates coming up that everybody is encouraged to go to that, whether it's gen ed or the special ed or the paras. Everybody's able to go to that, I believe. I don't know, there was so much this last couple of months. And we also got a policy, the staff have been asking for placement referral procedures for the, any, any children that are possible to be placed out of the Thomas, Thomas Dempsey Day School. And those finally came out and were given out to the staff today. So those are available if you need them. I think that's it. I don't know, I forgot something.
It's been busy. It was a lot. What's the date of the job fair again?
January 23rd, I believe.
Let me just check our calendars real quick.
We're just trying to make it through the end of the week.
Looking at my list, I did forget one thing that was discussed quite a bit.
23rd.
23rd, Thursday, the 23rd. Thursday? At the PRC meeting, there, there was discussion about Jefferson teachers losing their social, one of their social workers. And I thought, Margot did a real good explanation of letting them know that she was not pulled from students. I think it was kind of a miscommunication maybe, or she was not pulled from students, but rather from paperwork. And to assist in the, the needs that Washington has experienced. So that, that seemed to help.
Yeah, it's, you know.
It was your explanation.
Yeah, difficult decisions to make, trying to meet the needs of our students, as, as we've heard in our board meetings and trying to figure out. And while having one of our social workers in that position to work on special ed evals and the RIA evals and the paperwork, part of it is, is a wonderful thing to have. We needed more boots on the ground to help with our students, which redistributed some of the things then that Jefferson and Madison's counselors and social workers had to take back on again. They had had it before. So again, not something you want to do mid-year, but I always say, we, we always weigh it against, is this in the best interest of our kids? And it was.
We've had lots of discussions about that in special ed and, and our different meetings. And as hard as it was for everybody to take that redistribution and, I mean, obviously some of our admin, we're also part of that in most schools and taking on some of those responsibilities, it really was the best decision for our kiddos at, you know, that, that really needed that extra help right now.
Anything else?
The insurance committee, we met third. Quick meeting, open enrollment wrapped up, 20 employees added, dropped, changed coverage over that open enrollment time. That was, and MetLife Dental, that changed over, will be changing over in January, working with a few providers to get the ironed out, the network. So that was pretty much a big, quick meeting.
Community engagement, we had this month and.
Moved to month, moved to every month now.
Yes, we are every month now. So we're still talking about, our topic is chronic absenteeism, the attendance issue. Two things, we're coming up for actions on that. One is, ROE, ROE came back in and talked to us a bit more about that. And they've got a process called partnership mapping, where we can generate some kind of a, of a document or a draft of something that is a map of all of our partnerships in the community. The idea is we can take what we worked on last year, which was generating all that data and into this partnership mapping. Honestly, I don't exactly know what that is, but it seems like it's going to be helpful and should be good. The other piece is that we're talking about what, what do we want to try to do around this chronic absenteeism? And the place that the community engagement seems to be landing on is engaging with the community on educating people about absenteeism and attendance and the importance of, of just the education piece around it. So next month, we're going to be talking more about what we can do, kind of starting to look at some actual actionable things that we can do to, yeah, communicate with the community about that.
Have you guys had any input from truancy about that issue? I mean, I know that's the other end of this, but they've been dealing with some of our kids for many years and maybe they might have some input about how to engage the families of the students too.
Yeah, and it's, that is the folks who have been coming with us. And they don't call truancy, but they call it something like that.
They don't call it truancy anymore.
Yes.
Attendance support.
Attendance support, yes.
And we've heard a lot about how, you know, the things that they do and going into homes, there's a lot they can do, a lot they can't do. But really, what we're doing is trying to understand what are the driving causes behind it. And, you know, we've, I think I mentioned last time, it's a huge issue. We really don't, we don't expect we're going to be able, I don't know if we do a whole lot, but, but the piece we've picked to focus on is the education piece of engaging the community and educating people. I don't even know what people at this point, but engaging people or educating them on,
We had a really interesting, I did that, which committee, I've been not hearing a lot this week. Which committee was it that we were in that we were talking about truancy? Wasn't that special ed today? Or was it yesterday at DESPA? They were, they were talking a lot about why people, why the kids are missing. And I, I think that's probably a really good place to start is with our, like the educational piece of it and helping, there, there were some numbers that people were putting together and showing about, I think it was actually the ROE representative that was out here that had those numbers. And it was really eye-opening to see, you know, two days here, seven days there, a vacation there, and how much time that added up to over the course of a semester or a year of.
That was, that was today.
Children really, yeah, I thought it might have been today, children really missing huge amounts of educational time.
Yep.
I, I don't know that parents really put that together. I don't know that parents really put that together.
I think that's kind of what we're.
That's exactly it. The folks that came in kind of gave us maybe a similar spiel on all of that. And, you know, we're a bunch of people who are, people who are engaged already in the community wanting to do this. It felt like a shock to us. So the idea is, let's get that same shock and spread it throughout the community. Let people know this is actually a big deal and.
And how attendance not only, of course, affects their grades and the graduation rate, but, and the number of days matters, you know, matters in the course of a year. But that employers are requesting this too. I mean, their attendance patterns in high school especially are reflected in poor attendance patterns at work. And if we can tie that together and let folks understand that, you know.
And Erin put together quite a list of, what would you call it? A summary of, I think trying to, what's the word? Make it more clear within the buildings, what, gather information, what, why are students missing? Is it, you know, what, at least trying to, that's that word I want.
Make it the same through all the schools.
Trying to unify the practices that we have. Make sure that if it's the reason they're missing in first grade and how it's quantified, you know, is the same if they're in 11th grade.
So we can compare apples to apples and see.
Normalizing the data in some kind of way of seeing that. It was interesting to look building by building. It's very different throughout, throughout the building. Actually, the younger grades, Washington, with the kindergartners and first graders seem to have the highest rates of absenteeism, even more so than the upper grades, which I was surprised at. But there's a lot, a lot that we're learning as we gather a bunch of information. And then the task for the spring is going to be, how do we communicate that out to the community in the way that's going to.
Be meaningful.
Yeah, meaningful, move the needle. I always hesitate saying, like, actually making an impact here because it's a huge issue. It feels like we're trying to pull a giant boulder up a hill, but.
And maybe pick something to be successful at rather than tackle all of it.
Exactly, exactly. Just do what we can to be meaningful.
Well, even something tonight, you all approved the 25, 2026 calendar tonight. There's a reason we do that six months ahead of it, you know, being implemented. And that is, so hopefully, parents can look at it and try to work vacations or different events in their lives around the calendar so kids are not missing any more school than absolutely needed. So, I mean, those are the things, you know, it helps them get a look at it. We're also digging deeper into the data of different demographics that we find are missing more. Some of our IUP kids, students with disabilities, are missing more than those of non-IUP students at their grade level. So how do we dig in again? And how do we address those needs? So all these little pieces that we do, you know, fit all of it together. And I'm glad to see that we're going to get some of that education piece out there. And I think we've got a variety of avenues to get it out. Anything else to report? Then moving on to superintendent's report. This last month, the board attended at the school board conference, what they call the triple I conference in Chicago, as well as our new assistant here and district administration were there as well. And so this is an opportunity for anything any of you would like to share that made an impact on you. Mrs. Wagner was the delegate assembly for the board. And that is a specific one where the individual school districts throughout the state can make a resolution. And they go in and all school districts get a vote to find out if it's something that they want to adopt that would eventually become like a board policy. So anything anyone would like to share from the conference? This is the time to do that.
Well, I'll start with the delegate report, but that's all right. So we talked about the resolutions at the last meeting. And most were, all were adopted. There was discussion on some of them. There was discussion on, there was discussion, discussion on charter school funding. Quite a bit of discussion about that. But in the end, it was adopted that they also have to follow the evidence-based funding formula. I mean, that was adopted. These are just suggestions and resolutions that IASB will take to legislators in Springfield when they develop policy. The one about dual language was also adopted. It just gives districts flexibility to count other classes besides the traditional language classes for foreign language as a graduation requirement. The one that we talked most about maybe was healthcare coverage. And really, there was no discussion. They took it at face value. There was no discussion about the future or whether we would have to join some pool, whether there would be an option. There was no discussion about that. They just took it as an aid for rural counties that they would be able to join some pool of, for insurance. And so anyway, that was easily adopted. The polling place, that was a local control argument. And that was easily adopted also. That you don't have to close school on election day if your schools are not even being used as a polling place. So that was easy. There were a couple that came close, but failed to get, they have to get a two-thirds vote to, they were already recommended as do not adopt. And in order to, for those to be considered, they have to get a two-thirds vote. One was a cellphone usage, and there was a lot of discussion about that. Twenty-nine states have or are working on cellphone bans in their schools. And, you know, there just was a lot of evidence given and a lot of discussion. But in the end, they, we did not muster two-thirds to hear that. So it was, it was not adopted. They failed to get the two-thirds to hear it. But some suggestions were, were helping local districts to do the right thing if you had that message come from the state to not have cellphones in school. And it would be a clear, consistent policy, kind of equity for all kids. I mean, the research is there and that was all brought up. And it was very close. If it comes up again next year, it might, you know, it might have the two-thirds vote to hear that on the floor, but it didn't get it this time. Other thing was the criminal background check. We talked about that quite a bit too, whether school board members would have to have a criminal background check. And again, it was, it was listed as not adopting it. The resolution was listed as to not adopt. And it failed to get two-thirds to hear it this time. But there was a good deal of discussion about that too. And the fact that it's different than other offices that individuals seek because we work with children or we may work with children. So again, these things will probably be brought up again. And it's kind of chiseling away at an idea. And the more they do that, sometimes in the future, that might happen. I liked the little clicker.
Much easier.
That is.
Much easier.
Yeah, it's so much more accurate. So to vote on these, you know, we had this little.
No, but what did they used to do?
You just stood up and waved your.
Yeah.
It was like an old-fashioned rally or something. It was really more, it was up to the presider to determine whether, like, there's two-thirds out there, you know.
It was pretty disorganized.
It was just an estimate. So that's why, I mean, this is just so much more accurate, I guess. So, and that, were there any, anybody questioned that I didn't mention? I think I hit all the ones that we actually had discussion about too. And anyway, then I attended some leadership trainings on Friday. And our nearby superintendent from Oregon in Stoneman Valley, PJ Caposi. I attended a couple, actually, that he wrote. He co-wrote this book, but the other authors presented on Sunday morning. He wasn't there. So I don't know, they go around and do the shtick, I think, without him. But this is a pretty good book, if anybody. All three of these will be in our professional library, which we have here. We have a professional library upstairs for teachers and board members. So I've had these at home, but I shouldn't be bringing them in. The Art of School Boarding was one of the offerings. I don't know if anybody went, but it is really, especially for a new board member, so we're all getting kind of seasoned now. But it's still a good refresher on the school board. And one of the speakers was the author of the Trust Edge, one of the main speakers. So we, we had a training on the Trust Edge, which was really good. Probably, John, weren't you there? So, yeah, so most, were most of us, do you remember being there?
Yeah, it was about three years ago.
So it must have been.
You and David probably are the only two that weren't. So we read the book and we had, IASB came. They have trainers in the Trust Edge. It was really, really a good workshop like that. We did it during one of our summer retreats. It was the one we did out at Wolf Park. And we had administrators join us. It was really a pretty cohesive unit, oh, way to develop unity among the board and staff and administrators. So he was one of the speakers that you've probably heard.
And if I can add to that, like, he has a new book out. That's what he was out there doing. He's got another one out called Trust Matters and it sounds like a really good book too.
Did anybody pick it up? You can purchase books with your P card and then it would go into the library. So I don't know if we really, did we really say that before the convention?
I think it's usually in there. But if you are interested in a copy of Trust Matters, just drop me an email.
Can do that.
We'll get some order and make sure we have for you.
And then one, it was just a regular session, but it was Doug Bolton speaking on belonging. And I really liked him during COVID. I think during the convention, the year where we didn't have it, it was just all virtual. Must have been where I heard him speak and used a lot of his thoughts during COVID. But this time, this presentation was on belonging and Jared just left the room. But one thing I really liked was he just tells millions of stories during his presentation and then has some strategies. And one of them was, for instance, he said, we could, instead of in-school suspending a kid, we could make them belong to a club. You know, they would have to go to a club meeting. So many club meetings, pick out a club, any club. And you have to go to so many of those meetings instead of being Saturday schooled or in-school suspended. He has a lot of sort of out-of-the-box ideas like that that make sense. And he's going to be one of our, he's going to be the speaker at our spring regional meeting for IASB, Doug Bolton. Because I thought, is it the same guy? Because I've heard him, you know, speak at these big events. But yeah, they're going to have him at our spring IASB meeting.
Where is that one again? Do we know that?
Yeah, where is that?
They have not announced the.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, they should be coming up shortly.
Yeah, so that'll be a good one to go to, I would think. Pretty good speaker. All right, I'm done.
Yeah, I just went to the, well, I mean, the one you mentioned earlier. But I did the school safety and student discipline conundrum. So it talked about, you know, some issues that not just our districts have, but a lot of districts are having the same issue. Talking to people after the meeting and, yeah, it's a common, you know, what people I've talked to, a dozen people, other school members, it's, you know, it's common. So we aren't the only ones. So it doesn't make it better, but it makes it real. But it talked about how, you know, how discipline can be taken care of, things that we do already, you know, talking about restraining kiddo, obviously, if there being a safety issue to themselves or to the classroom or to others, how restrain them. And they, you know, people presenting were legal mentality. They weren't school board members, they weren't superintendents, they weren't teachers. So there's more of a legal aspect of it. Talked about how restraining, quote unquote restraining a student. They said if it's more than 45 seconds, you could put yourself in a liability issue. And, you know, I didn't know why, but 45 seconds, if I held Linda for 45 seconds, she'd probably get pretty uncomfortable. So, you know, talking about why you're restraining them, so on and so forth. So the biggest thing I took away from that was, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to be trained in restraining. So a teacher can't just restrain someone that's not trained. Because that could put us at a potential issue. You know, safety of the kiddo first of all, but also even safety of the teacher not being trained properly in that restraint. So talked about, so that was kind of a learning moment for, you know, that issue. So then I went to was preschool, basically preschool inclusion. I thought it'd be more than what it was. It was one of those, I think, good presentation, but it was kind of bust. So we find that out sometimes when we go to these meetings. There, you think they're be great, good ideas, and it wasn't. It was more for your bigger Niles was the presenting school. So what I hoped for was how we can get our pre-K, and we have a pre-K program, but like the other programs that are in our community that do pre-K, how to get them set up for IEPs. Problem is, programs like the Y don't have that ability to get an IEP set up before they come into our, to our system. So we do, obviously, but that's only 70 kids roughly.
Correct.
More than that, because we do, we split it half days.
Correct, yeah. We have our ECE program and then our preschool for all. The great news is our team in pre-K, give a shout out to pre-K for all and ECE and Maddie Nets and our parent coordinator. They do meet with all of the local daycare agencies and try to get a jumpstart on any sort of evaluations that may need to take place. So we're lucky being a little bit smaller that we can make those connections to try to get as many kids identified before they come in so we can program and provide the supports and services they need from the get-go.
So, yeah, that's basically what it talked about. So, and IHSA update went to, kind of run the mill every year. It's Catholic first public. So Catholic schools, private schools, private schools, first public schools in the sports realm. There is actually talk of them removing the multiplier. So what the multiplier is, is many inner-city schools are population of, let's say, 500 kids in their school. And they're playing a lure class, but they're dominating in all the sports. And there's frustration in the public side because they're running away with all state titles for volleyball to basketball to baseball, so on and so forth. So there's frustration on that. So there might be a chance to get rid of that multiplier. And then the basketball shot clock was a conversation. Small things, but things that, you know, I think it's, you hear these from smaller schools that don't have the ability to spend several thousand dollars for a shot clock that's required by IHSA. So get Y, but some can't afford. And what do they do?
Sounds little, but it's not.
And it talked about how, how they're going to have someone volunteer to do the shot clock and be trained when it's probably a high school kid that's probably doing it in these smaller schools. So some of that, you know, shocker, the state didn't really think about part.
Surprise. Good ideas that come with unexpected costs.
So that's, nice to hear.
I went to superintendent contract matters and all the ins and outs of hiring the superintendent and negotiating their contract. Won't go into the boring details of that, but it was extremely interesting and I did a lot of notes.
Appropriate.
And monitoring district performance through policy. And that one seems very overwhelming, but definitely something we should be probably doing more as a board. Not that I always need one more thing to do, but we should be doing.
You were at the, at the superintendent contract one?
I don't like people, John.
Okay, you probably saw me, just avoided me, huh? That's fine, I was there too. I took my own notes, but I thought it was great. It wasn't, it wasn't really about, well, it was, it didn't say it was going to be about hiring superintendent, but it was, there was a lot about that and that was pretty useful. There was also, I, I, I went to one on board self-assessments and how boards can do, were you, you were in that one too?
No, but I've been to that one.
Okay, all right. That was great. Ways for boards to potentially improve over time. It really seemed like that might be something that we could do. It's actually a service that I A S B puts on, send out a trainer and all that and I have something to talk about.
We have done it.
We've done it.
It's been a while.
Cool. Sounds like we're due. I talked with the guy actually afterwards.
Eight, seven, six, somewhere in there, wasn't it?
It was maybe.
When I was first on, first couple of years, yeah.
Around twenty-one maybe?
Yeah, it seemed really inexpensive and like they could do it once a year or more or something like that. And it seemed, seems great, so I.
We are looking at this summer, probably doing a board retreat. Kind of past practice has been every other year. So we would be due this summer. That might be something we could do then.
Yeah, I thought that, especially as we're entering this season where one of the most important things we're going to be doing is, is a hiring, hiring situation, like working out, improving us to the point where we can, we can tackle something like that.
It's very systematic and that's the one where we did goals and board goals. Yeah, it's been a while since we've done that.
Last one was at SOC, wasn't it?
That was a while ago.
Yeah, were you in at SOC?
Uh, SOC one was a little different.
Was that one at, okay.
Yeah, that was different.
That one was, was here.
I think we were out at, over here or we're out at the park.
I think it was here, cause we had whiteboard and we had a whole bunch of post-it notes and everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was a lot.
That was like, you know, six, seven hours on a Saturday, it was fun.
It was fun. It was fun. I think you and I have different ideas on the fun.
No, sarcasm. Great. Good pizza.
But yeah, I, I, I asked them how long would it take? It's, it's a handful of hours, but they recommended not at a board meeting. Pick a different day.
Oh, yeah.
At least not before our meeting.
Right, and it doesn't have to be, it's not, it doesn't have to be six, seven hours, three, four hours or something and.
Think about the negotiations with the, that's what that feels like.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, okay, moving along. The other exciting one, I, I don't know, I'm being silly of saying exciting, but I thought it was a, a one on fund balances. Mark, I just wished you were right there next to me so I could ask you a hundred questions right through this talk on fund balances, but.
You would have too.
I would have too, and I thought I wrote them down and sent them to you, but now I can't, I mean, anyhow. No, no, go on, it's coming, it's coming. Yeah, so we talked about the Miler ratio and all that stuff. That's what I went to, yeah, always a good time.
So I went to one, I went to the last time, it's called, What Would You Do, is kind of take on junky on this thing? That was really good. That one's always really good. So they give you, they give you these scenarios for school boards and you have to, what would you do?
Interesting. I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
So are they new, like?
Yeah, this year was different.
It was, okay. I, I don't think, different presenters are, cool.
The, the same presenters, but six different scenarios.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. It's really good. Then I got a chance to talk to this lady who worked for the Chicago Public School Board. Oh my.
It's enlightening.
They got a lot of things.
What do they do?
It's funny in my.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna.
Reorganize.
Yeah, reorganize and I think add, so I think they're gonna be like thirty men or something.
A what?
Thirty men. Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah. Sounds fun. Yeah. And I went to the one, the belonging one.
The belonging one.
Yeah.
I was at that one. I know, we didn't know we were all in there.
Yeah, we were.
Wow, yeah. Oh, I did see you at that one.
Yeah, and I, actually, that was the theme for me and I didn't plan on doing it, but other ones like that, I went to one that was sort of a dead too, that wasn't about that, but it was, it just wasn't very applicable to our situation. Parent involvement, but they have grant money and lots of money to do some of this stuff. But yeah, school culture and all of that, that was, that's interesting to me and it fit with what I was doing. Similar to the one we were at. But again, I didn't plan it that way, just ended up. Good though, my first experience at the conference, it was, it was good. It was good. Lots to learn.
Hope you can do it again. Oh, I forgot to say that P J Kaposi, the super, nearby superintendent, he, one of his was on the Enneagram. So I have diagnosed all of you and your personalities. Because that's what it's about. Leadership and that you, yeah, you have to see where people are coming from based on their personalities and they could say.
What's it called?
Enneagram.
Enneagram.
It might be fun, something fun to do at our retreat.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe P J wouldn't come and do that.
Has he written a book on it?
No, it is a book written.
It is a book.
If you think about Briggs and Myers, a lot of the personality, you define the traits in that.
I've always wanted to do that.
It's been around from the.
But they just applied it, they did write a book, but they applied it to their leadership book. And you did well, cause P J spoke with me and said you identified me immediately. He's, then they kept saying, now, don't do this, we know you're, we know you're analyzing all your board members and your superintendent. And he knows Margot and I said, so what is she? What number, you know?
Interesting.
But he likes Margot, maybe he'd come and do that for us, yeah.
Yeah, that's something we can absolutely check into.
I just wanted to clarify, I made a little snap comment. Our, our DEA negotiations are wonderful. That is not what I meant by that. Interest-based bargaining is going well and it's worked well for our district. Our teams are really, I met all the sticky notes like for hours on the thing. That's what that is.
Thanks for the clarification.
I didn't want anybody to think that wasn't going well, cause it was going very well.
Sticky notes, I heard you had sticky notes.
It's, it's a lot of sticky notes on the walls.
I just want to thank you all again, because again, a lot of people don't realize, you know, you all have jobs in addition to being on the board and you spend an entire weekend continuing to learn and meeting with some of the professionals that we deal with and we met with our architect as well as attending things. And so I thank you for your time and, and effort. But it's, it's always a great learning and I thought the sessions offered this year kind of rose back up to the level we were used to. Sometimes depending on who's available, it can be some slim pickings, but I think everybody had an easy time finding stuff to go to, just not enough time. I will say too, you know, that on the website, I A S B website, you can still go to conference, the conference app offerings. Yeah. And if, if they provided a PowerPoint, which all of them didn't, but, but yeah, you can still print out copies or read the PowerPoint of one you may not have been able to attend or something.
And I'll say one more thing too. I met a school board member from a pretty local area in town. We're talking, just obviously chat talk and, you know, on the side and he's talking, they were talking about issues with the district at the board level, not administration, but as a board members. He's like, they're, they're still fractured, you know, that he's just going into the drama of just so bad. It's a pretty small town and everybody knows everybody in this small town, just how broken the district, the board was. So hearing his horror story, quote unquote, and then looking back on it, you know, so I'm very lucky to be cohesive, great board. So I'm hearing his story and a few others, so.
I always feel that way at these president offerings that, that I go to, because that for one thing, and also the lack of knowledge, I A S B knowledge. Like we have used I A S B and done trainings and, but a lot of districts seem like they haven't and that's why they're having problems. And you know, we, we paid to join that organization. So I always feel like we, we need to use them and benefit from them and I think we have.
That's great. One more thing, at your places, Erin put a magazine, I believe it's called SOAR. And in there are all of our local school districts and highlights of things going on. And I think Jared and I believe John Tate was a big.
John Tate.
Part of this.
Yep, absolutely.
Really highlighting the areas of the C T E, the tech zone, our ag lab, all of the kind of the new offerings we have. And I think highlighting these things and, and how we continue to move the needle forward and provide programming for kids, whether they are going to be college or career-ready. And it's just a, a great handout, so. And it's, it's great to look at other area school districts and see what they're offering if we have it, if it's something we want to expand to. So I think the high school for really representing the district well in that.
And finally, we have.
Did this come out, excuse me, did this come out in the newspaper?
This is, I believe.
Like some of those.
By the newspaper.
It's by, it's by the newspaper.
Yeah, by Shaw Media. And they hand it out to districts and I think it's in a variety of places that the community can pick off.
Yeah, they're free of charge.
Oh, they used to come out right in the newspaper.
So many people are online now when it's not in print. Finally, we have had one FOIA request since our last board meeting. David Arbejo from Painters District Council Number Thirty requested documents for any drywall finishing, taping, paint projects that were related to Thomas J Dempsey Therapy Day School, and we have complied with that request. Is there a need to go into executive session for personnel report or can we do that right now and then there would be no action coming out of the executive session? We're okay.
I'll leave the personnel page, excuse me, and then ask for motion in a second. New hires, Beta Al Faraj, paraprofessional at Washington School, effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Herbert Ovito, part-time custodian at Dixon High School, effective tomorrow. Brittany Barlow, special ed teacher at Thomas J Dempsey School, effective January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Caitlin Wood, fourth grade teacher at Madison, effective January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Terry Pickett, special ed teacher at Thomas J Dempsey School, effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Resignations, Alexa Reader, Title One Teacher at Madison School, effective December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Retirement, Suzanne Weaver, third grade accelerated teacher at Jefferson School, effective end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Rosberg.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Gates.
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Aye.
I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules or one or more classes of employees, student disciplinary cases and self-evaluation, practices and procedures or professional ethics when meeting with a representative of a statewide association of which the public body is a member. Do we have a motion?
So long.
Roll call.
Mr. Rosberg.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Gates.
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiger.
Aye.